2017, any final action to report on a closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. So we will adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 26, 2017. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Howell.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
And Gaylord and Miklos are absent.
Okay, thank you for that. And if everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any agenda updates we need to be aware of?
You have no agenda updates tonight.
Okay, and with that, we'll move right into the next item here.
Okay, your first scheduled presentation tonight, item 5A, is presentation of the 2017 Community Service Day results.
Good evening, Christine.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Manager for the City of Folsom, and I'm pleased to share with you tonight the summary and recap of the 2017 Community Service Day. More than 2,800 volunteers served at the Fourth Annual Community Service Day, which was held on Saturday, September 16. Fifty-seven service projects were completed that day throughout Folsom. We saw young children who joined their parents to help with landscaping projects. We heard about a 24-year-old woman who spent her birthday helping the Rotary and with a letter-writing project for women facing breast cancer. She told us she wanted to do something meaningful on her birthday. And we also heard from a 94-year-old man who told us he couldn't walk, but he could still use his hands, and he was able to help hand out items to the volunteers that day. So volunteers of all ages, abilities, and interests were able to serve their community on Community Service Day. The day started off with a kickoff at Lakeside Church, including check-in, T-shirt handouts, a hot breakfast and coffee, and welcoming remarks before volunteers went to their project sites. That day, volunteers assembled more than 900 military care packages that were shipped overseas to our military troops. Six Folsom schools had beautification and landscaping projects take place. Legos were packaged and sorted for children in foster homes who had been abused. The Railroad Museum had the windows painted. There was a landscaping project over the zoo by the new barnyard. Volunteers wrote thank-you cards to be included in the military care packages. New fruit and vegetable gardens were built over at the Twin Lake Food Banks, over at the food bank, and fencing was built to prevent deers from accessing the food. Dozens of bikes were collected that day, which would be later refurbished by the inmates over at Folsom Prison, and more than 30 refurbished bikes were donated to Folsom children in need. The Pioneer Village had numerous gardening and cleanup projects take place. An invasive water weed known as the water hyacinth was removed in Willow Creek. Books were cleaned over at the Folsom Public Library. And the food drive again was a tremendous success, with more than 100 pallets of food collected. And Bella shoppers throughout the day stuffed a Folsom stage line bus full of food. Volunteer opportunities are still available to help put the food away in their pantry over at the food bank's pantries. So we had extensive media coverage that day, including KCRA, ABC 10, Good Day Sacramento, Fox 40, Folsom TV, Folsom Telegraph, and Style, and several other publications. This event wouldn't have been possible without the generous donations from our sponsors. Intel, Dignity, and Rotary Club of Folsom all contributed $15,000. Our platinum sponsors at $10,000, gold sponsors at $5,000, silver at $2,500, and our many bronze sponsors at $1,000. So I'm now pleased to share with you our video from the 2017 Community Service Day. So together, we neighbors, friends, and family will all get our hands dirty beautifying our streets and parks, also that tomorrow. When we wake up, we can look outside and continue smiling at our luck and our good fortune to live in this wonderful city. The city Folsom, the place that we call home.
Today's Community Service Day in the City of Folsom, and the Folsom Fire Department is partnering up with the City Parks Department, Intel, and community volunteers. We're cleaning up the invasive plant, which is called the water hyacinth, here in Willow Creek. They're doing a good job so far. They're moving quite a bit of it out, and it all has to be done by hand. So it's a lot of work, and we appreciate all the volunteers. Well, this site, we're actually very excited because we're putting together a care package to send to the military. It involves everything from food to socks to just things they wouldn't normally get when they're overseas. We had to move it to a community center because we needed more space to do all these packages and get all these volunteers in there.
It was incredible to see nearly 3,000 folks inside and out, literally just donating their time to this community. Everything, all the people who have put this together did a fantastic job.
So one of the problems was after this winter and over the last several years, the fence was getting pretty rotten and ready to fall down, and it was a safety problem for the little children. So we're rebuilding it. Thank you, City of Folsom, for the Volunteer Service Day to help us with rebuilding this fence for the preschool and all the little kids that play in the yard here.
I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Intel site in Folsom, and we're out here today in Folsom as part of the Community Service Day. We're applying a linseed oil solution to the Folsom Kids Plate Park so that we're kind of spitting it up and beautifying the area. It's super easy to become part of Service Day. We're always looking for new leads for projects. They just basically sign up online, or they go through the City of Folsom, and it's really easy to sign up, and we're always looking for new people to lead projects.
Thank you.
Christine, I know we're quoting that there were 2,800 people, but I can tell you the project that I was at, at Prairie City Landing with the Girls Love Mail, there was a number of Rotary Enns that had not registered through the site because we knew along months ago that that's where it was going to be, along with residents that live at Prairie City Landing. So there was at least 30 people unaccounted for there. So I have a feeling that number was probably much higher.
That's good to know. Thank you.
And Christine, thanks for, you know, the leadership on this. I know it occupies a lot of your time as we head into this, but actually year-round. I know you spearhead this from a long ways off. Just a quick mention, Steve, our council member Steve Miklos couldn't be with us this evening, but he's been an instrumental part of this from day one. So thanks for Steve for really having, you know, the genesis of this event. But, you know, I see videos like that, and it just gives me goosebumps. So from the bottom of my heart, thanks to all the volunteers, and I love the way you highlight the sponsors. I mean, you know, those are just such important members of our community, the corporate and church sponsorships that just do so much to give us all the tools we need to make it a big, big day. So my thanks, and we look forward to next year.
Next question. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Oh, and we do have a little presentation. Ernie, why don't you get up there to the microphone there and explain what you're doing?
I can't compete with those big sponsors, you know. But I'm a late sponsor, okay? And that's not unusual neither. This is from the Folsom Athletic Association. Your request got buried, probably my table. But here it is.
All right.
If anybody else is delinquent like I am, show up.
Thanks. And Ernie mentions the FAA. For those who don't know, that's the Folsom Athletic Association that Ernie's been a part of for decades, and thanks as always, Ernie, for the help in the community with that. So with the conclusion of that item, we'll move on to the next item here.
Okay, next is item 5B. This is a presentation by Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce regarding regional activities.
Good evening, Robert and Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to do a quick presentation. Tonight, we're just here to kind of do some recaps and results of some of the programs that we know that the City of Folsom has been engaged with, with the Sacramento Metro Chamber for years, but really specifically targeting what we've been able to do this year and kind of over the last few years with some of our major programs. So we're going to just go through a quick presentation, and we'd welcome any questions at the end, should you have any. For those who may not know, we are the six-county regional chamber as the Sacramento Metro Chamber. So we represent the similar territories of the Secog areas, and we really try very hard to be a regional chamber, not just focus on one city or one county or one area, but really the six counties that creates our regional economy. And so we do partner very closely with groups like the Folsom Chamber, chambers throughout the region, and we really see them as partners, not as competitors, and we do our best to really engage with our local partners. And as we focus on more regional priorities, allow them to focus more on the local priorities that exist throughout our region. What we're going to kind of talk about today are our regional advocacy and organic business growth components, which include the Capital to Capital, or CAP to CAP program, our State Leg Summit, our Study Mission program, and our Capital Region Small Business Development Center, or SBDC. And so with that, you know, one of our primary advocacy spaces for the Sacramento Metro Chamber are three key programs, cornerstone programs really for the Chamber, CAP to CAP, State Leg Summit, and Study Mission. And Robert's going to go into a little more detail kind of on those programs, especially CAP to CAP and State Leg Summit, kind of go through some of the metrics from the programs this year, and talk to you a little bit about some of the results that we've been able to see from those programs.
Great, thank you, Peter. Thank you for the opportunity. As you know, because many of you and many of your senior staff have been actively involved year to year, we go through a very deliberate process to develop our policy priorities each year for our state and federal advocacy efforts. This year, we ended up with 12 total policy teams, and we made every effort to make sure we were considering all the issues that came from throughout the six-county region. We identified early on that there were three key themes that just screamed out as our key policy areas, the first being regulatory review, reform, and rollback. With this year in Washington, it was a good year for us to go after some of those major regulatory impediments that impede you as you're trying to build a city, things like Waters of the United States and 404 and other permits that we certainly know have gotten a little bit out of hand relative to federal jurisdictions in recent years. But we know that the regulatory environment is really the framework in which an economy can grow. The second issue that I'm sure all of you could guess is the infrastructure, because the infrastructure's the table. The roads and rail, pipes and wires that we put in the ground are what we build our economy off of. And the priorities this year came from throughout the region, as they do typically each year, and we identified those early on. Those are a pretty easy lift, and we do get a lot of support from the senior staff of all the municipalities in the region as we identify what are the priorities to ensure that we're helping you grow. And finally, workforce to fuel economic growth. I don't think it's a secret that we've got a couple of key industries that are having a real challenge, meeting their career-woke and technical employee workforce demands. And they could grow better if we could produce more, and some of the barriers to producing more are at the state and federal level. And certainly with Folsom Lake College right here in town, you know, that's one of those growth opportunities to help grow the economy. So those were our top priority areas. When you look at the engagement by the numbers in our federal advocacy program through CAP to CAP and our state legislative program, we ended up with 360 participants this year, largest delegation in 10 years, going back to Washington DC to advocate for our regional priorities. We had a total of 279 meetings, 35 meetings with senior administration or professional staff. In some cases, the administration appointee at the top of the ticket had not been appointed for a department. We were able to meet with senior civil servants, which are typically their administration after administration. We also did five major policy briefings, one of which, you know, being here in the shadow of Folsom Lake, was on water policy, which we've done year after year to try and help educate the federal officials on what actually happens when policy leaves Washington and we all get to actually implement it and work it through. On our state legislative summit, we had 131 participants. Again, it was a sellout crowd. Had 60 total meetings with nine policy teams and nine issue papers and 36 distinct asks. I skipped it, but in Washington, we ended up with 40 distinct infrastructure asks for our region, and that's pretty important because that affected things like flood control, things like water supply, and transportation. Moving forward, I'm not going to read all these slides, but we did have some major victories that are a byproduct of our year-over-year efforts in Washington DC as a region. Certainly on the year-round budget, we got things done like year-round PEL, which will help Folsom Lake College and the universities in the region, the other community colleges in the region, help students move through quicker because they can continue through the summer months. Those that are on a very, very tight budget and are part of the PEL process can continue their schooling. It'll also help compress the time that it takes to get through four years if those students are motivated to do year-round. We also got some major transportation infrastructure dollars and some Carl Perkins support for those career-woke tech jobs. So those were pretty successful. As we look at the development hurdles, we found that we chose wisely with regulatory reform, review, and rollback because we found a very ripe audience for us to have discussions on issues, issues like the overreach of Waters of the US. Now, they aren't quite completed yet, but at least we're making more progress this year than we have in years past. We're also doing some pretty significant work on the habitat conservation plans throughout the region so that various parts of the region that are pursuing those can achieve some consensus. Another important policy for all of us here right at the edge of the mountains is there's finally some understanding about forest health, having a direct link to air quality and a direct link to the sequestration of snowfall, which results in water supply, and the fact that if we had a healthier forest, we wouldn't have the carbon release associated with forest fires. Now, for all of us that live right at the edge of our forests, we knew that, but getting our policy regulators to finally adopt and embrace that from an air quality standpoint and a forest health standpoint and a water supply standpoint was pretty significant. And then, of course, the regional water policy agenda continues to move forward with the Regional Water Bank, the efforts we're doing to pursue the Modified Flow Management Standard on the Lower American and Site Reservoir, which will hopefully take pressure off the American and give all of us that live here around Folsom a little more flexibility and control to ensure that we've got water supplies when we need them. Finally, we've got coming up on October 10 through 13, our Austin Study Mission, and I just want to touch on a couple of things. It's a sellout crowd this year. We did sell out our attendance, and we're going to be looking at what makes Austin work. And what we're seeing is there's a theme of collaboration throughout the Austin metropolitan area. We're going to be looking at their innovative culture, how we drive more of that in our region. We're going to be looking at how they, as a region, support and cultivate their festivals. All their municipalities come together and support, cultivate, and grow their festivals and their food and their music and their venues. They've got a great park, Zilker Park, which is the home to Austin City Limits Live, a lot like several areas on the American River Parkway that could be developed to be accessible to all of our residents in our region. The two I want to point out, though, that I think are interesting, is adaptive reuse, urban and suburban development. They've done some great work outside of the inner city, redeveloping, for instance, their former IBM campus. So think about the projects that we have with industrial redevelopment in and around our region in the suburban areas. That'll be a really good place to learn what worked and what didn't work. And then, of course, the advantage of increasing higher ed, which we all know we need to do. And with that, I will turn it back over to Peter.
Right. So as you can see, we drive small business retention and expansion in the Capital Region through policy teams with our advocacy and support, but we also have our economic development meetings on a monthly basis, and then we have our Small Business Development Center, which we'd like to talk to you a little bit right now, because you may or may not be aware of our SBDC program that we've been running now for almost three years. And this is a federal program through the SBA, and we run the Capital Region SBDC. It's a federal program that's funded 50% by the SBA and 50% by non-federal dollars. So we find most of our dollars in that non-federal match through local financial institutions and local businesses who are supporting economic growth through the SBDC. We actually service a little bit larger than our eight-county region in some regards, or the six-county regions, because we do actually pick up Colusa and Lake Counties, as you'll see on the map, and we don't encompass all of Placer and El Dorado Counties. We encompass the 916 area codes of Placer and El Dorado Counties. The SBDC supports local businesses by providing workshops on fundamentals of business success, loan readiness, business plan developments, and more. But the key really is the one-on-one consulting sessions. These are free to all small businesses and entrepreneurs who are looking to start a new business. So it's a free service that we provide with one-on-one consultation services that really help businesses stand up their financial planning, business planning, and really helps them get access to capital. It generates a lot of great results, which we'll talk about right here. In less than three years, we've actually opened up 104 new businesses in our eight-county region. We've counseled over 1,500 clients, over 650 jobs, and one of the key metrics is that $32 million of capital that we've infused into our local economy. So without this program, those things wouldn't exist because what we're seeing is we are the referral agency for financial institutions. When a small business goes to a bank or a credit union and asks for a loan and they say no, they refer them back to us. We work with them over a period of months, and then they go back and they get these loans. So these $32 million, or this $32 million of loans are really a direct result of those one-on-one consultation hours and setting up businesses to succeed and getting them to that point of loan readiness so that financial institutions can loan. And so this is making a tremendous impact in our region, and you can see that it's creating that job growth out there. So by the numbers, we've actually had 227 clients with economic impact in Sacramento County. We've serviced 924 of that 1,500 here in our region, 87 new business starts in Sacramento County, which accounts for 350 jobs, and 19, almost $20 million of that capital into directly our county. This is kind of a great Folsom success story about some veterans who went to obtain a loan for $250,000 and were denied, and after less than two years, they've opened their second location in Folsom. I think you know who this might be. We're not allowed to give all of the information, but they're now hiring over 35 million, or 35 new employees, and they've increased their revenue by 1.3 million. So this was an expansion into Folsom that originally was denied, but now they're expanding into not just Folsom but other areas, and I think they have a reality TV show that's shooting them right now. So it's kind of a great story, though, of how we're supporting small businesses and their growth in our region, and specifically here in Folsom as well. And so we're very proud of those numbers. We're very proud of that impact, and we believe that with the advocacy we do and the support programs that we're offering to the region, we are making regional economic impact in a big way. So here's some of our Capital Region hub locations. You'll see that we are servicing folks all across the region. Instead of making everyone come down to our headquarters in downtown Sacramento, we're actually sending our consultants out to your region and to your community. So you'll see that we have, actually, the Safe Credit Union is here, their headquarters in Folsom, so we're servicing the Highway 50 corridor at both Five Star Bank and Safe Credit Union. We've got our office at One Capital Mall for Sacramento County. But you'll see that we're really trying to partner with different chambers and different organizations to push this service out there, because it is a free service. We want every business that's looking to grow to come and talk with us because we want to see them succeed. And we know that the loans that are serviced right now are still in repayment, and that's what our financial institutions want. Most of our businesses that talk to us say the number one issue they're facing is access to capital. When we talk to our financial institutions, they say they don't have people to lend to. We're the bridge through the SBDC to connect loans to small businesses. So with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions about what the Metro Chamber is doing and has done in this past year.
Great, thanks. Well, thanks, Robert and Peter, for coming out and giving us update and all that. Have any questions for?
No, just thanks for coming out. You guys are welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Or every time.
Yeah, no, great information, and thanks for all the advocacy. That was a long list of stuff, so thanks for all you do because the whole region benefits from that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, so with that, next item, please.
Your next item is Schedule Presentation 5C. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming October 2017 as Arts and Humanities Month.
All right, and I have Vice Mayor Kerry Howell executing the honors here. So Barbara, if you'd come up with Kerry here.
Barbara is the Vice Chair of the Arts and Cultural Commission. I have the big print to read. So this is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming October 2017 as Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the City Council recognizes that arts and cultural activities benefit the residents and visitors of Folsom and are a significant contributor to Folsom's quality of life, and whereas the Arts and Cultural Commission works with the community to increase public awareness of, understanding of, and participation in the humanities and the arts, and whereas for more than two decades, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, including the White House and Congress. Whereas Folsom has a diverse and vibrant art scene, with local organizations providing opportunities for the public to celebrate and participate in Arts and Humanities Month in a variety of ways, including the following: Gallery 848 Nataoma, Kid in the Candy Store, Exhibit of Sculpture by Camille Vandenberg, World War II Life on the Homefront exhibit at the Folsom History Museum, Dirty Dancing National Tour at the Bank of America Gallery at the Sesquahara Center, but I'm still calling it Three Stages, Oktoberfest Craft Fair at St. John Baptist Church, Out Among the Stars, an exclusive outdoor dining experience to benefit Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience Project, Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day at Sutter Street Theater, Folsom Lake Symphony Presents Epic Victory, Antique and Vintage Market on Historic Sutter Street, History Unwind, which is the sixth annual fundraiser put on by the Folsom Historical Society at Unwind on Sutter Street, Apofab Presented by the Folsom Lake Community Concert Association, Fall Festival at Palladio Piazza, An Evening with Boss Gags at Three Stages at Folsom Lake College, Connie Rodriguez Demo, Folsom Arts in the Gallery at 48 Nataoma, Free Fall Stage, Androcles and the Lion, Family Storytime at Folsom Public Library, 11th Annual Folsom Focus Photography Contest by the Folsom Arts Association. So again, it's a typical situation. If you're thinking that there's nothing to do in Folsom, then you need to actually turn off your computer and walk outside because you'll find something. Now therefore, I, Andy Moran, Mayor of the City of Folsom, who hereby proclaim October 2017 as Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Folsom, and invite our residents to recognize the contributions of the arts to the community. I encourage all members of the community to attend these special cultural activities, proclaim this 26th day of September 2017. Thank you, Barbara.
Anything to add?
Well, I think that you listed at least 30 things that you can do this upcoming month, and there are a lot of other activities going on at all times. So as Vice Mayor, right?
Yeah, or you can just call me Kerry.
I could call it Kerry, as I usually do. But at any rate, there's always something going on here. There's things going on at the high school. There's just walking down Sutter Street. Right now, for cultural exhibits, you have something here in the front lobby that shows a lot of the artifacts that were excavated when they built the bridge over Lake Nataoma. So there's something everywhere you look. So we're glad to have so many things to offer people, and thanks for the recognition.
And thanks for all the good work that the Arts Commission does. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Barbara. Okay, thank you, Kerry, for taking care of that. All right, next item, please.
Next is Schedule Presentation, item 5D. This is a presentation of the City Manager's Fiscal Year 2016-17 Fourth Quarter Report.
All right, good evening, Jim.
Good evening. Jim Francis, your Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the fourth quarter financial report covering fiscal year 2016 and 2017. A quick summary of the financial results for the general fund will show that we had revenue of $82 million, which was in excess of what we had budgeted, and we had expenditures of $77.9 million, which was right on what we had budgeted, on target, giving us a operating gain of $4 million. Our unassigned fund balance increased to $13.5 million, which represents 17.3% of your expenditures, 15% being the policy, and at our last quarterly meeting, you encouraging us to certainly go beyond that 15%, which we've done this fiscal year.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. This just shows, again, the unassigned fund balance getting up to 17.3, and the fact that you've added, in the last six years, you've added $9 million to fund balance, which was down at $4 million at the end of the recession, and now is at $13.5 million. The story on the revenue side is that the $4 million, roughly $4 million of increase, all came on the tax revenue side of the revenue sheet rather than the non-tax revenue. So you can see your tax revenues are up $4 million from 47.9 to 51.9.
Jim, was that because of sales of additional housing sales, sales tax?
I'll get into that in a little more detail, but it was on the sales tax. It was primarily the Prop 8 changes that we had that were unexpected.
Okay, and with regard to the property tax, was that changed predominantly due to the changing valuations?
It was, well, I'm sorry, the, well, let me jump ahead to that, if you'd wait. I've got a slide on both of those things. So again, it was $4 million on tax revenues. On your non-tax revenues, it went from 29.8 to $30 million, so just a small increase there. These are your major non-tax revenues. So transfers from other funds was down about $300,000. Vehicle license fees was up. Parks and Rec fees were fairly flat. Development and building permit fees were down somewhat, and ambulance fees were up $400,000. So there was no real theme to it, but it just kind of balanced out as around $300,000 increase. Now, if I go into the property tax in terms of your question, we jumped 7.22%, and the majority of that was the Prop 8 adjustments. Now, the difference was, that was higher than we anticipated. The difference was, a lot of that was commercial property rather than residential property this time, and we haven't seen that before. Usually, it's been our residential property. So we had some adjustments on the commercial side that we didn't anticipate. If you, in fact, if you took that away, the Prop 8 adjustments, our increase would have been about 3.6%. And that's generally, 3.5 to 4 is what we generally project for property tax.
So is that what the projection was in last year's budget?
Yes, it was. So, and then the Assessor's CPI was half a million dollars, and your sale of new and existing homes was about $300,000 together. That's always a smaller number than you anticipate, because when you think of your tax, again, it's 1% of the value, but then we only get about 20% of that 1%. So that's why that becomes a smaller number.
So, and this is also, I would anticipate it being an anomaly, because I don't know that we're going to see those Prop 8 adjustments at that level next year?
Probably not. They were, the property, you mean on new homes and existing homes?
The, no, the adjustments.
Oh, the adjustments. No, I doubt that we will, and we did not project that for this year's.
So are most values pretty much back to where they were before?
Most residential values are, yes. On sales taxes, we were up 8.7% over last year, and these were the biggest increases. The business-to-business sales tax, which is your wholesale sales, but we, I'm sorry. We did have an overpayment in there of $570,000, which we had got that the Board of Equalization decided we shouldn't have gotten. So that is reflected in there, and we have eight quarters to repay that. So we will make those adjustments over the next two years to...
How did they make that mistake?
Well, it was, it was a company that filed that was, I don't know the details of it, but they were in Southern California, but the sales were up here, and they counted the sales as to Folsom rather than those, actually, two cities down south. Now, that's happened in our favor at times, so it's, you know, it goes back.
You mean where they did it and didn't figure it out?
Right. Well, not that, but that we've got, we've gotten, been the recipient of taxes that went to other cities.
Just cash the checks quickly.
Yeah, yeah. So that was the biggest, and in fact, if we didn't have that overpayment, then this would be around 6%, which was still a little more than we had projected, but more in the normal range. Again, business-to-business was the highest increase. General retail, and then food services, were the third and fourth.
That's a lot of money.
On our other non-tax revenues, you see charges for services, again, was up about 4%. And again, it's a number of different, again, we didn't see any real pattern to it. It was a number of things that went, both increases and decreases. And that's roughly what we anticipate. It's usually 3% to 4% in terms of charges. Our transfers were down somewhat, and that's simply transfers from other funds that we didn't actually need and didn't make. Building permits were fairly flat, up a little bit, and vehicle license fees were up slightly. So you have a 5.6% increase in your total revenue to go along with that 4.9% increase that you had in, you have in expenditures, and we'll get to that. On the expense side, you can see by categories, general government was about 1%, public safety was 7%, public, or community development, public works, about 5. Now, these two were both higher than you'd normally expect due to some one-time purchases, and we have some of those a little later highlighted. Parks and Recreation Culture was up about 3%, and then non-departmental was relatively flat. So you had essentially a 4.9% increase in your expenditures, which was only $45,000 off of the budgeted amount. Breaking down expenditures in another way, you can see salaries were less than a percent, and that's been a theme over the last five years that we've had, due to both the early retirement incentives we've had and to the pay scales that you changed through collective bargaining. So that's remained a very manageable number for us. Benefits are up at 9.1. The primary reason for that is our PERS contribution that generated that. O&amp;M is up 10%, and again, that's the one-time purchases. If we had, they amount to about $1 million in that category, and that would be about a 4% increase otherwise, which is about what we expect in operation and maintenance costs. Outlay was down 17, but it's only a couple hundred thousand dollars, and there was no new debt service, so those numbers just reflect the payments during the year. Now, on the major capital projects and outlay, we divided that into three different areas. This one's deferred maintenance. These are projects that were either completed or worked on during the year. Willow Hill Pipeline being the biggest one, but we completed Orangeville Bridge. We had our street overlay and pavement program at $2 million, Old Town Sewer Pipeline, the water tank rehab. We did some major improvements to police, fire, and library buildings. And Rainbow Bridge, of course, was completed last year. On what we called program enhancement and investment, again, not all these were completed during the year, but work was done on all of these. Economy Park, over $1 million, the Folsom Lake and Johnny Cash Trail, Natoma Waterfront Trail. And then these are some of the items I was mentioning. At one time, we replaced 10 ECG monitors in the fire department. We had the zoo barn, of course, work being done. This was a one-time, the storm drain video inspection system, and we had some, both police and fire, protection gear that we replaced. We had Trackett software that was bought last year, which is primarily for community development. That's a parcel-based information system, and will allow them to have access to parcel records while they're out in the field doing inspections, and automates that entire process. And then, of course, we had Fire Station 39, the final design work done on that, which you just had the groundbreaking for. The major vehicle and equipment replacements, again, we had nine police vehicles and an incident response vehicle. We had a Type 1 fire engine that's been ordered, isn't here yet, but it was purchased. We added a medic remount, which is an ambulance, fancy way of saying an ambulance. The sewer vector truck was added, and a water meter truck, and we replaced three solid waste loaders, side loaders. Again, those are just major purchases that we did. If we go into the enterprise funds now, water being the first one, the biggest issue here, story here, is the increase in the charge for service, which is up over $1 million. We had, and I'll show this on the next, we had looked at charges, had dropped about $2.5 million over the last three or four years, and that was obviously of, because of conservation measures and otherwise. And with those being relaxed, it's gone now up to $13.3 million, and we would expect that to probably be close to $14 million this year. So that change in that curve has taken place. I might add, that was quicker than, or more than we had thought it would in the year. So that was good news for the water enterprise fund. The rest of it's pretty standard operating expenses. There was no new debt service. Those are just the debt payments. We've got about $5 million, a little over $5 million of capital expenditures, which is about where we want that. And they still have $6.5 million working capital or fund balance, if you will. That was the water revenue. Waste water just keeps kind of flowing along, shall we say. The charges are the same, $6.3 million. They don't change very much. There's some new connections that adds to that. Expenses are within the expectation. There is no debt service in the wastewater fund, and our capital expenditures are about $2 million. Solid waste, same story. Charges are up somewhat because of new connections, few new connections. Our expenses are right in the range we had. There's no debt service, and our outlay represented the purchase of the trucks, the solid waste Transit's a self-supporting enterprise fund. The non-operating revenue is really intergovernmental revenue from the district, and that came in. You can see between that and our charges that we have on the system is at $4.2 million, down a little bit, but that really is a break even in the long-term operation for us, and it remains that way.
But I think we need to point out that it's only break even because there's money coming in from other government agencies.
Yes, the, yeah, the intergovernmental or non-operating.
Because otherwise, it's far from break even.
That's correct. Risk management fund is doing well. The decrease from 15.3 to 14.5 in revenue was a planned decrease. We actually lowered that amount in the budget last year. So that was planned. Our expenses were right on target with what we thought they would be. We have a healthy unrestricted net position of $6.6 million. And we've actually had fairly good experience with these costs. These are the largest cost centers, but you'll see employee health was actually down from last year, and retiree health was up. And that really just reflects your shift from active through the retirement system or the retirement incentive, because you'll see that's $10.4 million, and this is also $10.4 million between the two of them. So it's been fairly flat. Workers' comp and liability have gone up somewhat in the last, and those are areas we need to continue to watch and monitor from a safety standpoint. But that fund's doing very well. Compensated leaves, this is one that goes back in history. If you remember, we were at one time a negative $3 million in this fund, and over a period of years, we, a very short period of years, we turned that around, and we now have a fund balance of a little over $1 million in that fund. Tree mitigation, same thing. We used to have expenses in the $300,000 range, and we took those out a couple years ago. And since then, the fund has stayed fairly even, and we're 760 as a fund balance. We expect to have probably in the revenue side, close to maybe $400,000 this fiscal year. So that's some of the building that's going on. We've gotten these impact fees. And that's the end of my report. If you've got any questions or comments, I'd be glad to answer them.
Good job, and good news. I like that the fund balances up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I see you've got millions of dollars squirreled away in a lot of different places, Jim, so that makes the entire city very happy. But it is, it's, you know, whenever we see these year over year, and having come out of the recession, and you, at least in the one example, showing the unrestricted fund balance at $4 million at one point and back up to $13 million. Yeah, that is a lot of work over, you know, the last six, seven years to build that back up. So, you know, my thanks to all the discipline at every level of the city. I know every employee was a big part of getting us back into this really rosy fiscal position, so we'll keep up the great work. But thanks, as always, for the clarity of your presentation, Jim. And for anybody who needs additional details on that, Jim's always happy to have that on our website. So for people who want to look at it even more, that's available as well.
Yeah, both this and the staff report will be on the website tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thanks, as always, Jim. Okay, so with that concludes our scheduled presentations. The next item, please.
Your next item is Business from the Floor, and you currently have no request to speak.
Okay, so no request to speak on Business from the Floor, so we will go ahead and move on to Consent Calendar.
I'll move, I'll move consent.
So, okay, so Consent Calendar Items 7A through H moved by Vice Mayor Howell and seconded by Councilmember Sheldon. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes.
I just want to make one comment, Marcus. The, with regard, it's only because there's a bunch of items in here about the sewer pump station. There was an odor, there was an odor issue last night on Oak Avenue at the pump station over by the dog park, so you guys might want to take a look at it.
All right, duly noted. And next item, please.
Okay, your next item is Public Hearing Item 8A. This is Resolution Number 10006. This is a resolution approving a specific plan amendment to expand the previously approved boundaries of the planned development overlay district, establish maximum building coverage ratios, and modify the public, quasi-public section of the Folsom Plan Area specific plan.
All right, great, thank you, Krista. Good evening. Looks like we have Steve Banks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. Before you leave this evening, is a request for approval of a specific plan amendment to the Folsom Plan Area specific plan. This is a joint effort and application between the City of Folsom and the Folsom South Land Group. There are three specific things that are associated with this request. First off, the application involves an expansion of the previously approved boundaries for the planned development overlay district for the Folsom Plan Area. Secondly, the amendment's... Secondly, the amendment seeks to establish maximum building coverage ratios for the Folsom Plan Area, which were inadvertently omitted from the 2011 specific plan. And lastly, the amendment seeks to make some textual modifications to the specific plan to address the possibility that some of the public facilities within the plan area may shift to new locations. And so we need to account for those shifting of facilities by providing the appropriate land use designations for the vacated sites as well as for the new sites within the plan area. As I mentioned, we're looking to expand the planned development overlay district for the plan area. As you're probably aware, there've been a number of subdivisions that have come through the council over the course of the past few years. Those projects, those individual projects establish planned development overlay districts. The intent of this is to cover the remaining residential and commercial properties within the Folsom Plan Area. So on the diagram to my left, and maybe we can dim the light slightly so my eyes can see the differences in colors. The light purple on the screen shows the approved subdivisions within the plan area, and those areas have already established planned development overlay districts. What's being proposed this evening, again, is to extend that overlay district to cover the remaining commercial and residential properties. And those properties are shown in purple on the, on the map. I would also point out that the open space areas and the public, quasi-public areas shown in white, the overlay district does not apply to those particular areas. In looking at this extension of the overlay district, we certainly think it's an effective vehicle for city staff, as well as the planning commission to evaluate development projects. The planned development permit process is utilized for projects north of 50 for a number of years. And as a staff, we feel it's been a very effective tool for us in evaluating projects more critically. In addition, we think the process also provides some flexibility to developers to be a little bit more creative in the design of projects. And so those two things combined, we think are a good rationale for the extension of this particular district in the plan area. I would also note that a majority of properties north of Highway 50 do have a planned development overlay district currently. So this is, this is nothing new. The proposal to do the amendment also seeks to establish maximum building coverage ratios for development within the single-family, single-family high-density and multifamily low-density land use categories. This was inadvertently admitted from the 2011 specific plan. In evaluating these ratios and working with the landowner south of Highway 50, we considered ratios for developments north of Highway 50. We looked at ratios for current developments in the east area of the City of Folsom. We looked at coverages established for existing projects that have been approved south in the plan area. We also considered other cities and their, and their coverage ratios for developments in those categories. Perhaps more importantly, though, we looked at the overall concept for the Folsom Plan Area and the intent. Obviously, in the plan area, we have a significant amount of open space, over 30% of the land area is open space. That does not include parks or school properties. In doing so, we've concentrated the development along major transportation corridors within a plan area, and we have certainly mixed use and dense development along those corridors. And so we feel strongly that the 45% calculation, the 50% and the 50% figures fit in very well with the, the concept plan for the plan area as, as approved by the council back in 2011. This is a table that we put together, it's kind of a compare and contrast table. In the upper portions, we see the proposed building coverages of 45% and 50%. If you'll notice, the second, or fourth and fifth lines, the Russell Ranch subdivision and the enclave at Folsom Ranch subdivision, those are two recently approved projects in the plan area, actually have substantially higher building coverage figures. If we move down to the next set of figures, the Folsom municipal code, fairly low figures, and obviously there've been a lot of changes in development and market trends since those figures were established. If you move down the lines, you'll see the more recent developments in the eastern part of Folsom, Empire Ranch, the Parkway, Broadstone, those figures are significantly higher. And then going to the bottom line, you'll see that most of the recent subdivisions approved in the City of Folsom have much, much higher lot coverage figures. In looking at surrounding cities, we took a look at Roseville, as well as the City of Sacramento. We also looked at recent projects that have improved in those jurisdictions, and we found their maximum building coverage ratios fairly comparable to what's being proposed this evening by the city and the Folsom South Group. And lastly, this is a textual change to the specific plan, and it revolves around the potential that there's been some discussion that the school district believes the junior high school site and the high school site might not be the most optimal location for a junior and high school site. So they're contemplating a look at other areas within the specific plan to locate that particular school facility. If that were to happen, we would have to modify the land use designations for the vacated site, as well as for the new site they go to. And so this is a change in text, which accommodates the potential that this district may move one of their facilities in the future. I would note this project did go before the planning commission early this month, and they do forward their recommendation for approval of this amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this evening, and a representative for the Folsom South Group is also here this evening as well.
All right, great, thanks. Nice report there, Steve. So I do have a couple of requests to speak on the site, but any questions of Steve before?
I have nothing right now.
Okay, so with that, first request to speak.
Public hearing is open?
Yes, so we will open the public hearing at the insistence of our city clerk.
Your first speaker tonight is Barbara Leary, and Barbara will be followed by Ellen Post.
All right. Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening again. These, these comments probably aren't a big surprise to most of you, since I've been here on a number of planning issues and submitted comments about the updated general plan. My biggest concerns are when we change density, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't change density, because I think that's a good plan, but that we increase the number of homes in any given area. And so this is probably more specific than you want to address tonight, but I think that any increases in density of housing need to be accommodated by an increase in the open space so that there is space for people to enjoy when they're buying these small lot homes. They don't have to take care of the homes, but they should be able to enjoy local parks or have a space for maybe a community garden. The open spaces can be contiguous with open space corridors. I think it's important that we look at street designs that include enough space to plant trees. When we reduce the lot size, people don't have enough room on their lots to plant adequate shade trees. So having some kind of a median strip or other way to accommodate, increasing the tree canopy in these denser spaces is important. And lastly, I just want to address transportation corridors. Streets that are designed as grids reduce miles traveled and subsequently greenhouse gas production. They increase walkability, so when people are buying homes near shopping centers or, you know, places where there are restaurants and all, it's much easier to access those from a grid. These are the kinds of things a lot of people are buying in Sacramento. I'm down there quite a bit these days, and I think it's something that we need to consider out in this area.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Great comments, as always, Barbara. And I know a lot of that went into this, and I know you're very familiar with this. So where we have opportunities to do that, like in the, that urban center is a grid. It says, you know, it's tough to put a grid on some of the slopes we have to work with, but, but, but those are great comments. And I know speaking with some of the development community, they're, they're, they're looking at a lot of those options, so, so, so thanks for coming out.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I might.
Yes, please.
And I know Barbara understands these terms, and so I don't, I, I'm not clarifying it for her, but for others that might not, this particular action is neither increasing density nor reducing lot size. It's simply modifying the lot coverage area. So a single-family residentially zoned lot will still only result in one house. The lot will be the same size, but the coverage of the house over the lot is proposed to allow for higher lot coverage area because of housing demands, market conditions, and really because another driving force is the state water model, model water efficiency landscape ordinance, which significantly changes the type of landscapes that will be available to new home construction that, that makes it look a lot different than homes that were constructed 15 years ago. So planning terms are important, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
All right, I understand that.
I know you do.
It still reduces the number of large canopy trees that can be planted.
It may, it may.
And, and I think we need to.
Yes.
Plan for that and accommodate for it.
To, to the extent that we can, given landscape ordinances that are being shoved down us, on us by the state, yes. I just, I know you understand it. I just wanted to make sure that everybody else understood how the terms were being used.
And I think there's been a little bit of a misunderstanding, just because, again, as, as I ever said, I know you get this, and you and I spoke about this on the phone already. But there's been a number of projects that were, that were included in the presentation where the lot coverages are higher than they typically were 15 or 20 years ago. And I think it just makes it a little bit easier if, if we're getting people to understand that that's where the market is expected to go in the relatively near term. So I, I think that's important, because I think there are people that have been discussing this subject recently that don't really know what they're talking about. So they're trying to twist it into things that it's not.
Okay, well, I don't know where that came from.
Yeah.
Or who's trying to twist it. I'm just concerned about adequate tree canopy. And I know, you know, you can get rid of lawn and all the rest of the high-water use plants, but trees are still important for the environment.
Yeah, duly noted. We'll make sure that Mike McDougall is a big customer of Green Acres Trees, okay? So other requests to speak on the site?
Jim, you guys need to add a tree to every single lot.
Your next speaker is Ellen Post.
All right, good evening, Ellen.
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and also the Stonebrier neighborhood tonight, so I volunteered to come. And so we just wanted to clarify what this means to us along the development of Folsom Ranch or Folsom Heights. Does that mean it's going to encroach more on our open space? Or does it mean it's going to increase the residents and therefore the traffic that so far has intended to cut through our neighborhood? And what impacts will it have to us?
Yeah, and some of that was outlined, and I, some stuff I saw moving around, but yes, so, so everything you've seen to date as far as lot plans does not change at all. So, so what this does was, was just really what amounts to just formalizing some of the lot coverage mandates that, that these developments have. So, so if you've got a map there with showing lots.
Lot of maps, and none of them are very clear. And I've asked a few times if I could get exact measurements from our lot lines along Stonebrier Court and Stonebrier, well, all the whole, all the homes along that, that area. I have not gotten it yet, but every map we see, like today's map I printed, it's now right up against our fence lines. So we're concerned that, you know, stuff's going to happen that we don't even know about, as you know, the road did, so.
So let me suggest this. Steve, maybe you could get Emily the information. So Steve, who presented this, he's the, he'd be the go-to person on this. So let's just make sure that you get the latest maps.
Okay, so I've asked that from him a few times.
Okay, well, we'll make sure.
And instead, I got a diagram of a 60-foot road that's going, that they're planning next to my house instead of what I asked for, the, the.
Okay, we'll make sure, we'll make sure you get the, the latest maps.
That was a little upsetting. And so I would like the exact distance from all the homes. They've asked me tonight to get that, because people are concerned about now.
Well, we'll give you maps, but if you want exact distances from all the homes, you can, you know, that's not something we'll provide.
Well, they said 230 feet average, and then one of the maps is just like right there, so.
Well, we'll get you the maps. I mean, the measurements are easy from the maps, so, so we'll make sure you get the tools to work with.
Okay, I would really appreciate that. I've asked three times for it.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Absolutely, Emily.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, any other requests to speak on this item?
You have no more requests to speak.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Anybody else? Any comments, questions from council members?
I'll move the item.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Howell, and I will.
Let's take it.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Sheldon. Please call the roll on this item.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Moran.
Yes. All right, that concludes 8A. Next item, please.
Okay, your next and last discussion item is new business 9A. This is resolution 10005. This is a resolution approving an affordable housing loan in the amount of 5.3 million from the city's housing fund to St. Anton Folsom LP, authorizing the city manager to execute loan agreement and related documents, and authorizing the use of sewer fee credits for the construction of 100 affordable housing units at the Bidwell Point Mixed Use Project and appropriation of funds.
Okay, great, thanks, Krista.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Moran.
Oh, there we go, there's Pam, I'm sorry.
Members of the city council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. For this item, just a little background, in June of this year, the planning commission unanimously approved the planned development permit for this project, Bidwell Point, and it is 140-unit mixed-income multifamily project. 100 of 140 units will be affordable to low and very low-income households. And the item before you this evening is really a request from St. Anton for a $5.3 million loan, affordable housing loan, in order to help the financing for that Bidwell Point project. The city's finance director, Anne Goodwin Consulting Group, on behalf of the city, reviewed the pro forma and are recommending to the city council approval of the loan terms and loan amount of $5.3 million. The terms are attachment three of the report. With us this evening, we do have Dave Goodwin of Goodwin Consulting and the city's project proponent, Ardi Zahadani, from St. Anton's, available to answer any questions that you have about the project.
Okay, great, thanks, Pam. And, and I guess, so this is something we just recently did for the project at Oak Avenue Blue River, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so for those unfamiliar with how these things work, there's, there's funding sources that the city has that are limited to this sort of stuff, which is basically subsidizing so that rents are more affordable for some, some folks that could use the help and just entry-level job people and things like that. So, so this isn't out of the ordinary, in fact, was just recently done, probably similar to the scale, I believe. So, so I have no questions, any questions?
No, I just want to make one, excuse me, I don't, I lost my voice. Don't say good.
[laughing].
I just want to make a point that, see, I hear it all the time, affordable housing is not homeless housing, okay? So we can get that on the air and everybody try to understand it. What it is, these are young people, young jobs, like we all did at one time, and this is needed, and we need more of this. So I just want to make that statement before we get into any discussion.
Right. And let's see, so, gosh, let's see, so we have no requests to speak on this item. Any, anybody wishing to address the council or the community on this item? Okay, seeing none, no other questions, comments?
I, I think it's a great project.
Okay, I agree.
I make a comment.
Okay.
I read this real thorough, and I, and we have a great example of another project from the same company in town, performing quite well. So the hopes are there that the vehicle is not better, as we always say. So I think, and, and the need is here. With the other project, we needed that, we need this, and we need more if we can find the money to do it. So I think it's a great project for the town.
Great, so consider that a motion?
I'll, I'll move the resolution.
Okay, so we'll say moved by.
You can move it.
Moved by Vice Mayor Howell and seconded by Councilmember Sheldon.
Hopefully thirded by you.
Thirded by me, which I will approve with my vote in a moment here, so, so please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Moran.
Yes. All right, well, congratulations on that. Thanks, Ardi. Okay, that concludes all those items. Let's see, so next item, please.
Next item is city manager reports.
All right, Mr. City Manager, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council and those of you in the audience. Great news, construction started on the Fire Station 39, which is the corner of Ritchie Street and Empire Ranch Road. You'll all recall that we had the groundbreaking just a short time ago, and that construction is already underway. So we're excited about getting Fire Station 39 built, staffed, and open. I do have some urgent news regarding White Rock Road. Tomorrow beginning at 9:00 a.m., one westbound lane, really between Eldorado County Line and Placerville Road, will be closed until about the middle of the afternoon for some very urgent roadway repairs, because as all of you know, that, that
very urgent roadway repairs because, as all of you know, that that roadway is very old and, and probably below the city's usual maintenance standards. And since incorporating that area, we've been working like crazy to bring that roadway up to speed.
Do you have a question, Mr. City Manager, that was asked by somebody? And so that road really, is, is that the border between the existing City of Folsom and then unincorporated county? Or is that all?
On this, generally speaking, on the center line of the road, as, as is with Prairie City Road.
Is that why we're only fixing half of it?
Well, we're, no, not necessarily, because we do work very well with, with Sacramento County, but we are fixing the worst chunks first. Because as you know, White Rock Road and its current alignment and iteration doesn't have a very long lifespan because the JPA connector and the improvements that will, that are planned to be made by the connector and as a result of development in the south of 50 really don't justify bringing that whole roadway up to our standards. And so we're, we're doing some urgent repairs in some of the most worn areas of that.
So the answer to the question then is, is that there's a kind of a cooperative arrangement between the county and the city where we just figure out who's going to work on what?
Yes, sure, indeed there is, yeah. We, we work very, very closely with Sacramento County on those areas where we share county-city borders.
And if you could also put some, some cell tower repeaters when they fill those potholes, that would be helpful, too.
We will also be experiencing a closure of Willard Drive on Monday, October 2nd, and that will be closed for five business days in order to promote infrastructure installation in, in and under the roadway for the new projects there on either side of Willard Road by the Cressley Home Corporation.
So is that going to be closed all the way from Prairie City down headed toward Intel?
The whole length of the road, yes.
So if you're going to Safeway, you'll have to go the other way.
That's right. You can make a very easy turn there, right at, right at Prairie City and Iron Point. And lastly, a big event, as the Vice Mayor mentioned earlier, there are times in Folsom, if you can't find something to do, all you need to do is step out on your porch and you'll probably hear it. There's lots of things going on on October 14th, headlined by the celebration of the completion of Phase 2 of the Johnny Cash Trail. So we have a whole day of events planned, including the ribbon cutting, a special exclusive dinner that night, a 6.2-mile run that the mayor has assured me that he is trained for and ready.
Oh, right.
So if you need to be pasted, you want to have a personal best, run with the mayor. And if you're not in that greatest shape and you want to walk with Laura and I.
And bring a dog.
We will be, we will be puttering along on the much shorter and more relaxed 4.2-mile walk that will basically cover the whole Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Johnny Cash Trail. And you'll be able to see both bridges and the full extent of the trail. And we're very, very excited about that day. On that same day, there's a Peddlers Fair in the historic district. There's a pancake breakfast and open house at the fire station on Glenn Drive.
There's also Bark and Splash at the Aquatic Center.
I think Bark and Splash is the week before.
Somebody told me it was the same day.
Yeah, I think it's the week before. I don't know, I could be wrong. Nonetheless, all of this.
Krista, our brilliant clerk says it's October 7th.
All of this and more can be found at the city's website at www.folsom.ca.us. Sorry, thank you.
Are there still tickets available for the bridge dinner?
I don't know. I guess that was the city manager vice mayor co-report, then co-comment, right? Ernie, you got, got to be.
Yeah, I have two items I want to talk about. I want to further expand on the volunteer day because I was one of the many, many that was over packaging, packages for the veterans, for the GIs to go overseas. I did it two years, a second year in a row. This was much bigger. I mean, we had, it was twice the volunteers, I'm sure. And I know the production was twice the size. So it was a great year and, of course, it, it's just wonderful to see how, how we take care of our troops. Second thing, I participated along with the mayor and Roger at the ribbon cutting for the Vista, the formal opening of the stadium. If you, if you want to look at a beautiful view, go out there and look across from the home side to the mountains and the, and the developments across the street. It's fantastic. Folsom High is fine, it's very nice, but Vista is something else to be remarkably up to, to view. It is beautiful. It'll be cold, and I wasn't ready for it, but other than that, it was a great night. And the school district did a good job of doing the opening of that arena. Great facility, a great campus. Just another one of the jewels of this town.
Great, thanks, thanks, Ernie. Carrie?
Just drive careful, be kind to others.
Thank you very much, and all I have. Everything's been mentioned that was on my list, except Ernie mentioned, you know, what two wonderful high schools we have in town. And I'm just always reminded, my one son graduated from Folsom and the other one from Vista, and they argue all the time about that. So, so it's, but really a wonderful thing to have as far as those great, great high schools in town. So with that, we will say good evening and meeting adjourned at 7:46.